Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. So, Councillor Bolt, could you read the first motion about adopting the agenda?
I would be happy to, Your Worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Gary Waterfield. Be it resolved that the Council of Town of Perth adopt the agenda for the June 24th, 2025 council meeting as presented.
Thank you. Those in favor of that motion? It's unanimous, thank you. I'll read the land acknowledgement. "We respectfully acknowledge that land on which we gather is the traditional home of various indigenous people. As we work towards reconciliation, may we all live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples." So you've all seen the agenda. Does anyone have a peculiar interest they would like to disclose? No, seeing none. You also have the option of declaring later on if it becomes apparent that you do have an interest. Okay, Councillor Bird, please, the next 5.1.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor McCray. Be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth adopt the minutes of the May 20th, 2025 regular council meeting.
Thank you. Those in favor? Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a delegation from Toby Shannon. He's advised that he won't be here until 5:45. So I'll proceed with the rest of the agenda and then revert to his presentation when he arrives. So next is the consent agenda. Which is long. So there is one item removed from the consent agenda. Site Plan Control Bylaw, Councillor Waterfield.
Moved by myself that the following bylaws and motions listed below on the consent agenda be passed and numbered accordingly.
Thank you. Now you've all received correspondence from the clerk. This bylaw is somewhat redundant since the provincial legislation has changed. So, Councillor Waterfield, would you go ahead with and read item 2.1?
Moved by myself, be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth passed bylaw 5226, being a bylaw to authorize the Director of Development Services or designate and clerk or designate to complete site plan control agreements as presented in report 2025, Cal. 7.8.
Okay, going back to item 9.1, calling the question. You've seen the suggestion from the planner, so those in favor of that motion?
Through the chair at this point, we're looking for this one to be defeated and then the new one's coming up with the staff report. So if you can vote against this one, please.
I should have been more specific. Those in favor of this motion? Ah, seeing none, that motion is defeated. So proceeding to 12.1.
Excuse me, Your Worship, could you pull your microphone just a little closer? I'm still having difficulty hearing you.
Is that better?
Much better.
Oh, okay, sure. Moving ahead with 12.1, does anyone have any questions about the nature of this motion before we vote on it? Seeing none, all those in favor of 12.1? I thought he'd already read it. But, okay, let's have you read it to make sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved by myself, be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth passed bylaw number 5226, being a bylaw to designate the whole town of Perth as a site plan control area and delegate authority to the Director of Development Services or designate and clerk or designate to complete site plan control agreements as presented in report 2025, Council 8.1.
Thank you. So, any questions? None? I'll call a question, those in favor? Let's carry unanimously. So going ahead to committee reports. Councillor Mc... Sorry, Deputy Mayor McPherson, have anything to say about County Council?
So for Lannert County, probably the big news there is the county gave the municipality Mississippis Mails $2 million to set up a daycare center that's funding through the provincial government. So that's pretty helpful for that area of the county. It's one of the issues I've had for a while is the lack of daycare spaces in Lannert County. It seems to me that from a county level to municipal level, the three big issues are housing, long-term care, and daycare seems to be growing a little bit. And I think we need to spend a little bit more focus on it. I know it's one of the issues we sort of talked about in the past. That's my report for Lannert County, the biggest news, I think, coming from Lannert County for me.
Thank you. And also at County Council, Toby Shannon presented his ideas about possible uses for the Gunkwon Campus Hospital Board, met this morning at 7:30. So a couple of things were... There's an interesting system coming in as to how to handle pharmaceuticals and so that the possibility of error is decreased. And so the head of pharmacy made that presentation. We also, Margot Hallam, the Chair of the Spitzfels Foundation, presented a plan for raising money, a very interesting plan. She doesn't look just at the next year or so, she plans over the next seven to 15 years. Climate Change Advisory Panel. So at the last meeting, there was a request from the Climate Change Advisory Panel to have their plan included in the strategic plan. Council, its only difficulty was that, with that, was that it was simply a request. It wasn't any detail about what might be in that plan. So Council asked, defeated the motion per se, and asked for an amplified report in October. Any questions? Okay, going on. Oh, people. Did you have anything else to say? Oh.
Yes, I did. Also, at the Climate Change Meeting, the TAE cleanup was discussed. And I believe it's going to be in September. There was a reuse center update, several vacancies. In other words, the reuse center is not covered on many of the Saturdays between now and the end of the summer. So we're looking for more volunteers to come out on Saturday. And they checked, we checked the forward agenda again. Do you want me to go on with the rest of my... I've got an H-PAP and that's all for CCAP.
Thank you. And also, last Thursday, we... The committee was taking on a tour of the lagoon and the waste site, which really was very interesting, despite the topics. Councillor, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor McPherson, the OPP.
So we held our Lannert County OPP detachment board meeting last Wednesday. They're now going to be held at the county building. Stephanie Gray is the new Executive Assistant for the board, which is fantastic because she was a previous board chair. And obviously, she runs all the grant programs for the OPP for this region, so quite happy to have her on board. Last week, one of my goals as a chair is to, well, we have a few new members, is to introduce the members to what the police actually do. And so last week, I invited Dale Small. He's the OPP dog handler for this region. He does Lannert County's Stormack, Glen Gary, is that right? Stormack, Glen Gary, Dundas, Dundas, okay, anyway. And Frontak. And I think I've told you before, I met him a couple of years ago. And as a, he's a dog handler, I think, for the last four years. He has two dogs. One dog is what you'd call the crime dog, that goes after people who aren't being very nice. And the second is a search and rescue dog. He brought both dogs with him. Again, he did about an hour presentation outside the county building for us. He had hidden some items that the dogs would normally have to search and find. And the dogs had no trouble at all with that. And a lot of the county staff actually joined us for it. They were pretty impressed to see the dog. So each month, I'm trying to have something new from the OPP that they do to come and educate our members. On Friday, I chaired the Zone 2 meeting of Police Service Boards. I think Zone 2 might be the biggest in the province, I'm not sure. It goes from Deep River to Cornwall, Quebec border, and I think all the way to Belleville, maybe even further. And so every police service, Ottawa, you know, Kingston, Belleville, everybody joins these meetings. We had, I had a member of the provincial liaison team from the OPP come. He used to be a sergeant here in Lannert County. He's out of the Eastern Region Headquarters now. He's the person that goes to situations that may become problems for the OPP in regards to demonstrations. So, for example, he was in Ottawa when the convoy issue was going on. And he would, and he would go and talk to the leaders of the convoy and the indigenous leaders and anybody else who had a concern at the time. He doesn't wear a uniform, he just wears an ID. And he tries to work with all the different groups in order to settle the problems before they become bigger problems. And he also is the spokesperson to say that in two days, we're moving in, so you better be moving out. So he's the firm hand of the OPP. There's four of them, I think, in Lannert County. They're building teams across the province. I think he's training different police forces to have their own now, because the big issue now is to try and head off a lot of these problems before they, they come. He gave a long history of how the OPP got into this business. And it was very interesting for the people who were there. There's a lot of new members in Zone 2 who don't really have a background in policing either, so it's quite interesting. The new policing act has had so many new changes and seems to be undergoing new changes almost on a monthly basis. It's almost like planning that every time we meet, there's another chief's memo that we all have to learn. There's a significant amount of education you have to take now to even sit on a police service board in Ontario. And there's even going to be more on an ongoing basis. It's really interesting stuff. And finally, the meeting in, this meeting was in Castleman. The detachment commanders gave a bit of a presentation. And you know, in the Castleman areas where the police officer was killed a couple of years ago in the ambush, as well as another two officers injured. So that detachment's had some difficult times in the last two years, but that detachment was the one that found the little girl on the side of the highway that's gone missing from Montreal. So they were pretty excited in that detachment. And it was just down the road from where we had our meetings where the little girl's found. So very nice to see the officers in that region. We're really in a happy mood for those few days there that it was such a good news story for them. So, anyway, a lot of stuff coming down the pike. And one thing I did do was I offered up Perth for next June to have the, a Zone 2 meeting for, for the, all the boards to come to Perth. And I don't think there's been one in Perth in 10 years. So I've talked to the town staff and they're going to reserve the Krista Palace. All of council can come to the meetings. And actually, the meetings we have at the county, I'll send everybody out an invite. And if you want to come, they're public meetings, anybody can come to them and, and learn. It's, it's quite a change. Sorry, one more point. I had two police chiefs come who run municipal services in Ontario. And they're talking about the challenges that they're having in their services and the number of calls and types of calls that they're facing, same as the OPP, that are not traditional policing calls. And these two chiefs have been faced by their own councils, have been told to cut the funding. When the, when the budget's come at budget time, they're being told that you can't have the 10 and 15% increases that they need. And so the chiefs, the chiefs are sort of, I think, reaching that point that they're going to start saying to their councils, you tell us what you don't want us to police and we won't police that anymore. But there's so many things that they're being called upon now to do that was never in traditional policing. So it's, it's pretty difficult, I think, what they're going through. So, anyway, I'll keep you updated. We don't meet in July, we'll meet again in August and the rest of the year. So I'll try and fill you in on what we're doing.
Thank you. Councillor Bird?
Yes, just a follow-up in case anyone on council or in the community that's listening feels like the county members were privileged. Constable Solf will be doing a display, operations allowing, on Canada Day at Congon Farm with the K-9 unit.
Okay. So moving on, the Heritage Advisory Panel. The Councillor Bird or Councillor? Yes?
The biggest thing that we had at the meeting yesterday was a presentation by, God has forgotten his name, Toby Shannon, on the Red House. And it was very, very interesting. I'll let Dave talk about it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, we're going to see the same presentation shortly when Toby arrives. But one of the first things I want to remember to say is that when we look at this, it's come from a recommendation from the Heritage Perth Advisory Panel that council follow through with this in, in the wording of the direction that it's going to be dealt with later by council. It, it's an exciting thing and it fits in so many areas. And I welcome discussion after the delegation. But I just wanted to remind you that it is already, the Heritage Panel was hoping that it would go forward to council and it's come forward within two days, so.
Thank you. Next is the Drew Farm Working Group. Councillor McCray and Councillor Bird?
Your Worship, I was sick and unable to attend that meeting. Were you at that, Dave?
Yes, I was. There was just a quorum and it went ahead. We're moving according to the calendar to present to council a series of recommendations as per council's requests. So the committee has fulfilled its mandate. That will be clarified. And as I say from the beginning, it's been understood by the committee that they had a limited timeline to get a result and that it would be recommendations, not decisions, insistent decisions. And it's quite exciting because it's a slightly different approach to when we were on the last Jewel Park, because it's been very clear that it's a, almost a passive environmental approach. I think that's the right expression, isn't it? Yeah. To, to, to the recommendations of what will go in there.
Thank you. There's a very extensive report attached to your agenda and it's all great work. This project sort of stuck, started off on a bit of a rocky path, but making great progress. Staking Committee, we haven't met. So... The Lannert County Climate Action Working Group. I don't believe you were there at the last meeting.
No, it was the same day.
Yeah.
Very same day.
I found out that the county has money available, $5,000 per municipality for environmental initiatives. So I've advised staff of that. So, Councillor McCray, the DIA.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll talk about the Business Improvement Area. So Grant Mahon graciously gave a presentation from Environmental Services on the recycling program and the impact it would have on commercial and residential properties. Then there was a discussion by the Beautification Committee on the new pots and the lovely hanging baskets you see around town. We have a number of new members to the Beautification Committee. They are, the committee includes Krista Macor, Brody Barrigan, Jane Farrell, John Clement, Claire Rothery, and Susan Parks. They were appointed to the committee for the remainder of the term. I was appointed as the interim Chair just until August 30th, 2025, which will give us time to recruit a new Chair for the Business Improvement Area. There was the, accepting the resignation of Rob Marose as Chair of the Stewart Park Festival Committee. And there was a lot of discussion on the emergency evacuation plan that's moving forward under the Stewart Park Festival Committee.
Thank you. And you're up again for the Chamber of Commerce?
Yes. The Chamber of Commerce, Perth and District Chamber of Commerce, I think I mentioned this before, but they have gone ahead to hire an admin assistant from June 9th to August 1st. This is a grant for eight weeks to support the day-to-day operations of the chamber. The, also, they will be hiring an event coordinator beginning June 30th to August 22nd, another eight-week period. And I suspect their job will entail helping a lot with preparing for the golf tournament. And I think, as I mentioned before, there was over 180 vendors at Maple Fest and they made close to $42,000 on Maple Fest, $41,885. Paloma Mazur will be going on to maternity leave very shortly, that'll be in the fall. And everybody should be made aware of the golf tournament on August 13th at Mapleview Golf Course. Gunshot started at 12:30. And that's about it.
And Councillor Waterfield, the Library Board?
Yes, Your Worship. On June 2nd, I attended a Policy Committee meeting. We reviewed a number of policies as we always do. This time was procurement, tangible capital assets and investments. Then we had a Library Board meeting on June 16th, a pretty quiet affair. We, as a board, passed the recommended policies from the Policy Committee. So that's my library report.
Thank you. And again, for the RBCA?
Somewhat of a longer report. On May 22nd, we had a board training session, which was an overview of conservation land management. This was followed by a board meeting, which I chaired. Highlights from that particular meeting was updating hearing procedures. We also updated our administrative bylaws. On June 3rd, I spent the day at the Foley Mountain Conservation Area. What we're doing this year as a board is that we are encouraging board members to get out into the field and do job shadowing with different staff members. And I spent the day there, meeting with Dan Cooper, who's the Director of Conservation Lands and Stewardship, Rebecca Whitman, who's the Foley Mountain Area Supervisor, and Lee Roberts, who's the Outdoor Education Assistant. It was a fantastic day and I really got an insight into their roles. Then, of course, this past Friday, June 20th, we had our annual RBCA watershed tour at the Perth Wildlife Reserve. I was pleased to be the host and the emcee for that event, and I would thank you, Mayor Brown, for attending. Also, Councillor Bird was registered, but he had to cancel last minute due to a personal commitment. It was an exciting day educating attendees in the very important that we do in these various conservation areas. Then this past Sunday, I was emcee again at a tree dedication for Dr. Jason Kelly at the RBC headquarters to recognize his outstanding leadership and 11 years of service as Chair of the Rideau Valley Conservation Foundation in Memory Lane. This is a trail of trees. Each tree is dedicated to a particular outstanding leader that has made a major contribution over the years. And what's interesting to note is that there is a tree dedicated to a Perth resident, David Crowley, in Memory Lane, who served the RBCA for 35 years, five as Chair. So we all should be very, very proud of that. Then on Monday, May 23rd, I attended the Second Quarterly Meeting of Conservation Ontario. This was a great opportunity to meet fellow board members, staff of other conservation authorities, and staff of Conservation Ontario. And that's my RBCA report.
Thank you. Councillor Bird?
Yes, if I may through the chair, for Councillor Waterfield. We were talking, and this is casually beforehand, the Perth Wildlife Reserve, and I'm sorry, I missed that day. It's literally right on our doorstep and the clue's in the name. And staff, maybe answer this. Do we promote that enough as something for people? I mean, it's not an exclusion zone. It's open for people to enjoy. Is, I'm right in saying that? Do you feel that it gets promoted enough or perhaps it should be part of what the town promotes if we don't do it already?
Thank you very much for the question through, Madam Mayor. All of our conservation areas near RBCA, which we have 11 or 100% open to the public, we encourage the public to attend. Our two larger conservation areas, Baxter and Foley, have numerous educational programs. The Perth Wildlife Reserve, you're right, Councillor Bird, is literally at our doorstep. It's 15 minutes from where we sit. I personally have walked those trails more times than I can count. We, as a conservation authority, do our part in terms of promoting the visiting and use of this conservation area. But I certainly would encourage Perth tourism to consider also promoting it, because even though it's south of town, it really is a feature of our, the greater part of our town that we should really, really promote. So I thank you for bringing that up.
An interesting story. I looked up the site before I went and presented on behalf of the town. And back in the 50s, believe it or not, Canada geese were becoming extinct. There weren't very many of them. And so staff at the conservation authority made sure that goslings were looked after and so on, and the population began to increase. So if you have problems with Canada geese, it all started here.
Okay.
Oh, and that Lannert County Traffic Advisory Working Group.
Madam Mayor, the, the group met on June 4th. I was absent at that meeting due to conflict.
Okay. And we have a motion to accept those reports. Councillor McCray, could you read that, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Jim Bolt. Be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth receive the council committee, local boards, and external board reports minutes as presented.
Thank you, those in favor? Let's carry unanimously. Questions from the media? No. You make mine so dull. Okay, the next meeting dates of council is August 26th. And then going on to 16.1, we are taking July off as, as usual. I discussed with staff the possibility of having one meeting in July and we talked about it, but was decided not to do that. So we will instead, there'll be a special committee of the whole on August 12th. It would usually be the 9th, but there's been some scheduling problems. And then at, that's at 1:00 PM. And then a regular committee of the whole, August 12th, at 5:30 PM. If we can't cover all the business, there's still room for another meeting, just what we need. Councillor Smith, could you read the next motion, please?
Oh, be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth approve calling a special committee of the whole meeting on Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, beginning at 1:00 PM. And the change in date of the committee of the whole meeting from Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, to Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, at 5:30 PM.
Thank you.
Sir, if I might just speak to the, the first part. So we, in August, we were, our staff were hoping to bring significant financial reports to council, so the asset management plan, some long-term financial planning, discussion on borrowing and other finance as council requested in advance of the budget process. So that's, that'll be a somewhat lengthy discussion. Uh, so that's, that'll be a somewhat lengthy discussion. That's why we're proposing having a special cow in the afternoon on the 12th. Uh, and then proposing to move the normal one from the fifth to the 12th, which was already scheduled as a tentative cow, uh, just because the fifth was right after the August long weekend. Then there was some scheduling, uh, conflicts there.
Any, any questions? No? You had a vote? Yes? Uh, those in favor of that motion, please? Thank you. Uh, what do next? Deputy?
Just because we have a couple of minutes, I think, to kill, don't we? So we're waiting on Toby?
I just, uh, reached out to Toby. Said he's, will be momentarily here, but he's also happy to present after in camera. So it's up to council. If you want to go in camera now and deal with that, he said he's happy to present, uh, when he gets here after that fact or after you're, you're out of in camera, but it's up to you.
Okay. Well, let's proceed with the closed session. And if he's willing to wait, as we have waited, um, we will hear from him then. Um, Councillor Waterfield?
Moved by myself that the Council of the Town of Perth resolved itself into closed session at 6:00 PM pursuant to the Municipal Act 2001 SO 2001-C25 as amended for the following purpose. One personal matter about identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employee, subsection 2392B CAO 2024 Performance Evaluation.
Thank you. Those in favor? It's unanimous. Are we meeting here or sunshine? Okay. We'll be meeting in the sunshine, then?
I, and I'm not totally sure, but I think that's the first kilt run since 2019. Um, and I remember the other kilt runs Trevor ran in his turnout gear also. And I had, I had, um, friend of Rock's had to step out of the race, so they gave me their bib. So I got to run. I was talking to Trevor before the race. I haven't run in five years. And I said to Trevor, I said, you'd better run beside me because I'm probably going to drop dead here with you. But, but anyway, um, it was really hot. I mean, for everybody was there and I know lots of town staff helped out and stuff. Uh, that was one fantastic thing for Perth. And I'll tell you, I ran behind Trevor, oh, for a while, and then he seemed to get farther away. And then he, but then he started stopping and talking to a lot of people on the streets. But I think I said, there was a group of teenage girls, maybe, I don't know how old they were, 18 or something. But anyway, I was maybe 10 feet behind him and he, and he sort of ran by them and they're all going, he's next level. Look at that guy. And I said, what about me? I'm right here too. Anyway, hats off to the organizers and town staff. That was, that was great for the Town of Perth and, uh, I hope they can keep that going again. That was always such a good thing to have in the Town of Perth. But I'll tell you, that was hot. And for Trevor to do that in that full turnout gear and carrying the Scott Airpack on his back. That's, uh, that's everybody, everybody in the whole race was talking about him. So way to go, Trevor. That was great.
Did you by any chance ask him what motivated him to do this?
Uh, like I said, he's, my memory is I know he's done it before because I've been in all the kilt runs and I know he's done it before in the past. So I'd, it's, if anybody could do it, it'd be Trevor. He's certainly the guy who's got the physical ability to do stuff. So, yeah, great representative for the Town of Perth.
Yes. Toby has advised that he is here. We're just waiting for him to appear in chambers. There he is. Welcome.
Hi Toby.
So we're ready for you to fire away?
Uh, I, I can begin anytime, Judy. You're, you're good for me to go?
You're good to go.
Okay. Um, thank you. And I'm sorry I'm late and I hope I'm not, uh, interrupting your in-camera session, but, um, many of you have seen this presentation. Uh, but I will repeat it again because it's something I think that is, uh, very important and, uh, quite exciting. So the official, uh, plan, as you see here, is to restore the Red House. If you go to the next slide. Right. We would like to, uh, restore and reconstruct the Red House in the Tay Basin. Uh, I think it is a foundational building, uh, for Perth. It's the earliest official building. I think it's in fact a important foundational building for the nation, in fact. And, uh, I can talk a little bit about that, but, uh, it does represent Perth's early civic and military history, which is wonderful. We'd also like to showcase, uh, heritage construction skills in concert with the college and its program or whatever is left or whatever emerges from the college and its program. Um, and hopefully we can create a public asset with deep cultural, educational and economic benefits. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the structure there, but, but broadly, I would love it to be a building in the sort of spirit of a public trust building. So there's many of these in the UK, as, as many, most of you know. But it might be something similar to a, a McMartin house, a, a building that people could use for generations. Um, next slide, please. So very faithful to, uh, methods and materials. So currently the building lies unconstructed uh, at a property that I own and heritage construction consultants are doing an inventory. And it's not, it's not in great shape. Full disclosure, there'll be pieces that will have to be remilled and, and rebuilt. There were fires. It has sat outside for a number of years. And it's a wood building that's 200 years old. So there are no surprises. But we do think, uh, this won't be a ship of Theseus. We do think most of the wood will be used and most of it can be put back up. And we do, uh, hope that it will have its original footprint. Um, it will be led by the Heritage Carpentry Program. The people involved right now are graduates of that program and some people still involved at Algonquin College. As we know, that institution is up for, um, potential closure. Uh, but it, it, that will have no bearing on this project. If that, if the, uh, campus does close and there is nothing there, this project will still go on. So. Um, and we have, um, a heritage architect involved. Adam McKenzie, who was on the Perth Heritage Advisory Panel. I've worked with him on, uh, many cases. His father is the incredibly esteemed, uh, Julian McKenzie, who's done, uh, Parliament Hill Buildings and has won the Order of Canada. It's a, it's a very reputable firm. He, he really understands heritage. Uh, and they're from this area. They understand Perth. Um, so that's important. And, uh, I think the location is important too, right? By the Crystal Palace, right? The Tay Basin, right at the, the cultural and historical center of, of Perth and accessible to folks. Next slide, please. Uh, in terms of key partners, and when I, when I say this is a publicly, a, a public trust building, I, I'm, I'm also speaking from a governance perspective. This won't be owned by me or anyone apart from a board that initially would have at least three components. One would be, uh, a representative from the Town of Perth. One would be a representative of the Heritage Construction Program and one would be me, who's the, the philanthropist. But, um, it, again, it would not be owned by me. It would be a not-for-profit venture who, that would eventually either cede into the town's property or, or be, uh, backed in this, in this governance structure into perpetuity. So no investment is, is required from the town apart from, from some infrastructure. We expect to be working on it, uh, we're working on it now, but we expect that by, uh, summer 2026, we could make that a work site. Uh, because the whole thing has to be re-erected in situ where it is now and then disassembled and then re-erected again. So there, there will be some infrastructure, uh, requirement from the town. I, I don't know what that will be. Uh, we're in conversations with Grant Mahon. He's been exceptionally, uh, helpful and knowledgeable about that particular spot. I suspect there will be some regulatory hurdles because it's, uh, you know, potentially Parks Canada, Rideau Valley. Hopefully we have a consultant engaged that can help us navigate that. Um, again, no investment from the town. Um, what, what I, and this will probably require a future, future, uh, legal conversation between this entity and, and the town. But I'm happy to say I will take it all on my own for the first five years in terms of making it fiscally self-sufficient. And if I can figure out a way that it can be, I'm happy again to cede the entire organization back to the town and have nothing to do with it. So, for example, it could be an event space. It could be an information center. It could be a, a sort of a, a museum of sorts. Again, uh, the, the goal is to make it a, a, a building for the public. Um, it's actually, it's interesting. Its original use, they would, they would have balls and meetings and both church and secular meetings there. So it's a surprisingly large space. One of the things in conversation with Grant is they, he thinks that the washroom facilities could be a separate building like, um, Crystal Palace, which then allows the interior to be, um,
fully used.
Originally restored. So again, um, the, the other thing I, I may have, uh, not mentioned because the Duke of Richmond said paint it red. It will be clad like you see here in the picture. But the, the interior may expose logs. So you actually get to see part of the, the construction package as well. Uh, next slide, please. Right. And, and why is the site ideal? So again, it's, uh, we're proposing, i- if I hadn't said so, right behind Coots Cafe on Colburn Lane, right on the Tay Canal. The unfortunate thing is, um, uh, the, Grant thinks there will be a couple of trees that will have to come down. I know that's always contentious and they're beautiful trees. I love them myself. Um, there is a, uh, there is a monument and a tribute to uh, women who have suffered domestic violence that are, that is there. I think we'll have to have a conversation with, um, Interval House. Ideally, it's just moving it a couple of meters down. So I don't, I don't think, so I, I think everything sort of stays as it is. And Grant informs us, and you probably know better than I do, that that parking lot is being redone in the summers of 2026, 27. So it's a perfect time. Um, other reasons, of course, it's the terminus of the Unesco Tay Canal. So it's a, a perfect, uh, uh, a perfect spot from a, from a historical perspective. We, we think, and this is somewhat contentious because the history is not entirely formed, that the, the, the main architect and builder of this building is a guy called Joshua Jebb. And, uh, he goes on to survey the Rideau Canal. He actually goes on to have a quite astonishing colonial career in the building of uh, British Empire jailhouses. He, so he's, he's a notable person. And when he's in Perth in 1816, like a lot of these folks, he's 19 years old, which is just astounding. But, uh, a- anyway, all, all this to say, I think it is a, a, a building of national importance. Um, it's again, central to local businesses and the natural framing of the site with the Crystal Palace, the Library, the Fire Tower. No doubt it will be the most photographed and visited building in Perth. Uh, and then as such, a living, breathing, uh, heritage construction zone, tourist zone. And, uh, and, and, uh, yeah, a, a part of our living cultural history, uh, and civic building. So, uh, yeah, next slide, please. And, and what I'm showing here is just the, the sort of signage and the look and feel of a website. So one of the things we're really keen on is exposing a lot of this history. There, there, there is actually different local historians who have different takes of who built it and what. And, and I would love them all to write essays and, and so that, that people can understand that this is again, a living history. I say here CW Jeffries, that from our childhood, if you remember reading, uh, Canadian history, he would often be the illustrator. So we'll have this look and feel that you see up there. But if you go to the next slide, I, I think the following couple, oh, right. Now here, here's, here's something interesting, which is the, when it's a construction site, let's say for the two years that it's, we would love it to be not just a, a blight on the neighborhood, but a, an interpretive center. So that you come and take a look at how things are built, how, it's actually, uh, and just as a kind of a nerdy aside, the logs don't just sit on their dovetails. They're, they're sort of tongue in groove. Interestingly, like all the other blockhouses around. So, so that's why we know it's built by the Royal Sappers and engineers. It's a military-built, very specific, uh, building. But for example, this is just a, this is just a, uh, an imagination of what the building site could look like with some, with some boarding to keep people safe, but also some information with lots of, uh, ability to view the construction that's going on in, in a traditional way. If you go to the next slide, I think there's probably more of the same. Right. And just highlighting here that both Joshua Jebb is this astounding colonial figure. And of course, the Duke of Richmond, uh, when he's in Perth, he's essentially the head of British North America. So he's, he's the most senior person. And he either dies of rabies shortly after leaving the Red House or from a drinking bout. And, uh, we're not, we're not encouraging that at the Red House, but, yeah. Go to the next slide, please. Uh, right. And there, again, there's some precedent around the world. There, different countries do this really well. In Bergen, one of our collaborators from, um, Algonquin College, Jack Hollinger, who's the, the architect of many of the, the heritage restoration programs there, has been to Bergen, has, has taught at Bergen. And, and these little buildings will have 10,000 tourists per day come up. Yeah. And, and it's astounding, right? It's, it, and it's incredible for the town and it, it, it celebrates our heritage. It's, so both things I think are, are great. Go to the next one. I think people can, uh, if you've ever been to Colonial Williamsburg, it's essentially an upper Canada village, right? It's a living historical monument. The next one, the French do this exceptionally well, especially with, uh, with their stonework. Right? And so th- these can all be interpretive centers where, again, our history and our culture can be on display to build, uh, communal pride about, about, uh, you know, what, what Perth's about. I think that's, I think that's fantastic. And, and the last thing I'll, I'll just leave you with is i- if we can figure this out with the college and with the town, if you go to the next slide, um, there are a number of, of buildings around town that, uh, I suspect private enterprises will, will walk into and restore, and I hope they do. I, I may do some myself, but if not, uh, if you go to the next slide, this may be the most pertinent one, is the jail, for example. It really is an albatross. It's, I've been through it a couple of times. Uh, it would probably have to take a public-private partnership where it becomes a, a tourist destination and a building destination, but it, it probably isn't, couldn't be self-sufficient economically on its own. I bet you it would cost 20 million bucks just to get it habitable. But, but again, with a partnership like this in pu- public trust, I suspect we could raise money. We could have college students do work and we could turn it into, again, an incredible asset for the community. So, um, you know, my ask for the town is, um, uh, first off, an endorsement of, of this plan directionally. And then secondly, uh, you know, some promise to work towards a legal agreement where we can figure out what this trust would look like.
Okay. I saw Councillor Waterfield first and I saw Councillor Waterfield first and then Councillor Bird.
Toby, I would like to thank you for your multiple contributions to our town. Thank you for this bold imaginative proposal.
I'll start again. Toby, thank you for your multiple contributions to our town. Thank you for this bold imaginative proposal. As a councillor and a former member of the Organizing Committee of the Perth and District Historical Society, I believe it is critical to preserve and promote our town's history. The Red House being a prime example. I actually see anxiously await the staff report on your exciting proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Gisborne.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, I'm very enthusiastic about this.
And not only because most people think I was probably there to assist in 1816 when it's done. But this touches on so many things that we try to achieve on council. Not least, our new concepts of certain things can only get done by partnerships and/or sponsorship. This would be a prime example of where we can start moving forward on that. Speaking on behalf of the arts community, and this has been spoken about a number of times in different areas, but here in council, should mention it, there is a desire and a hope that that area that we're talking about become a second part of the hub of the downtown. It already has the Crystal Palace and that we've invested in. And the theater is there, Mammasi's is there. It is becoming something more than just a parking lot. And this fits in to that as well. I understand the legal ramifications will have to be sorted out in relation to we can't support a business as council operating out of there. But I'm very happy that we're going to be discussing and voting on moving it on from informal discussions that Toby has had with staff to hopefully council endorsing staff to move forward with whatever's necessary. And if I can ask you a question that I asked you on Monday. You are hoping to be, I was going to say shovels in the ground, but there may not be necessarily for the pad, if it's a pad. But you would like to physically start on the site approximately a year from now?
Yes, yes, Councilor Bird, yeah, roughly. So we had a meeting with the construction team yesterday. And they said that would be optimistic but doable. And it would be, they think essentially two warm seasons of resurrection again. So if we could get here, it may not be spring, but it would probably be maybe exactly, as you say, a year this time, that would be ideal, yeah. Thank you.
Councilor Bolt.
Thanks again, Toby, for all you've done and what you continue to do for our community. I echo the same sentiments of Councillors Bird and Waterfield. Anytime we can bring anything to this town and even better in the BIA district that draws people to the town, to explore the town and realize what a beautiful spot this is, it's a win-win for everybody.
Right.
I wholeheartedly support what you're doing. And I can only, I can, my mind is just racing right now with different things that you could use that building for. So you just have to use your imagination. There's lots of seniors in this town that are always looking for a spot to do something in. I mean, it's just unending, the number of things that could be done with it. I did have a couple of quick questions. I assume this is going to be slab-on-grade?
That's what, that's what my architect and Grant are talking about right now. So that would make the most sense, given the, how it's serviced and given how it's built.
And also, I think because of the proximity to the canal, you know, you've got to be careful how you're digging around that. And the other question was, is it going to be, how many square feet is it approximately?
I should know this off the top of my head. It's, I'm going to say, it's bigger than you think. It's like 35 by 50. It's actually, because they would have hundreds of people in it. It really is surprising. And the full, the second course of logs is a full ceiling height.
Wow.
And so they would have town council meetings and balls and assemblies. So it's, it probably would be maybe not 100 people now upstairs. But, but to your point, I think it could easily be a community center for people who wanted to square dance or play bridge or, yeah.
So, yeah, and to that end, I, like I say, was wondering, because of the size of it, we've got parking right there, so that's a natural fit. So anyway, bravo, and I as well am excited to see how this moves forward. And you got my 100% support. I love your idea and thank you for it.
Thank you, Councillor Bolt. I just want to say before, just because there was a comment, and I haven't addressed this, which is, when I say I would operate it so that it could be in cash recovery. So there would, the goal would not to be for me to take that profit. It would be for the entity to hold that cash in escrow so that when it were, when it was to become a public asset, then it would have some operational cash, so it wouldn't be required for the town to continue to invest in. I just want to make sure. I will not be running my business affairs there. But, and one of the things, you know, hopefully, as an entrepreneur who lives in this community, this is, this is part of what I can help with. I can say, hey, here are a few things that work. And then that money can be set aside for the long-term upkeep of the building, of which there, of course, there'll be expenses, yeah.
Councilor McGee.
Wow, this is so exciting. Again, thank you very much for being such a visionary person and having such a passion for the town of Perth. I just wanted to let you know too, Toby, that it's interesting, and this is very timely, because last evening and this morning, I attended two sessions on the strategic plan of the business improvement area. And of course, that's right in the business improvement area. And one of the things that they wanted to develop in that area was it to become more of a hub. And so that's the icing on the cake. So it's right in line with what the business improvement area is thinking about. So thank you for that. And the big part of all of this that I'm very passionate about and excited is the whole educational part and the learning part and the opportunity for young people in our community to have that asset and to be able to learn and grow so much from it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, Toby. I said to Toby, I met him about five years ago during COVID, very briefly. And I don't think a lot of people in town know what he did for Perth at that time. He's a very quiet, behind-the-scenes individual that helps everybody out. But I'm glad you're getting the recognition that you deserve, Toby. I know you're the visionary behind this whole project and some others coming forward. So I just want to say thanks. I really appreciate what you're doing for the town of Perth.
Thank you.
So I heard this presentation before, a couple of weeks ago, when he presented to the Deputy Mayor and myself and some of the staff. And, you know, for the very first moment, I was all in for it. I'm a history nut and, you know, give me more. I said to Toby at that meeting that, you dream big. And he said, "Why not?" So Perth is very privileged to have you here and doing all of these initiatives. So there is a motion, Deputy Mayor, 6.1.
Moved by myself, signed by Councillor Smith. We resolve that the council of the town of Perth receive from information, the presentation of Toby Shannon, the Red House, restoration of the Red House, and direct staff to bring forward a report on the proposed restoration of the Red House.
Okay, any discussion, questions, those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you, sir. Okay, now we will go into the closed session.
So moved by myself that the town, that the council of the town of Perth resolve itself into closed session at 6:28 PM pursuant to the municipal act 2001, SO 2001-C25, as amended for the following purpose. Personal matter about identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, subsection 2392B CAO 2024 Performance Evaluation.
Thank you. We have to change the time. So I guess we should vote on that again.
I guess we're all in favor.
Okay, so number eighteen point one, Councilon McCray. If you could read that please.
Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor David Byrd. Be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth rise and report from the closed session at seven fifteen P M.
Those in favor? Thank you. So, um, reporting. Closed session council approve the closed session minutes from April twenty second, twenty twenty five. And to discuss the human relations matter, the C A O twenty twenty four performance evaluation. Those in favor? It's carried. So nineteen. He does.
Moved by myself, signed by councillor Bolt. Be resolved the council town of Perth approved the updated C E O job description dated June twenty twenty five.
Yeah, discussion, questions, those in favor? Ananamous. Okay, so nineteen. Councillor Smith.
Be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth Perth passed by law number five two two seven. Being a by law to confirm the proceedings of the council of the town of Perth at its meeting held June twenty four, twenty twenty five.
Okay, those in favor? Ananamous and adjournment councillor Bolt.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor David Byrd. Be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth adjourn the June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five council meeting at seven seventeen P M.
Okay, those in favor? Carried.